The question becomes, you know, if I sent out one less mailer, which was around $2,000 apiece, would I have even won my election?
Welcome to the rethink they see reframe series where we challenge conventional narratives about social change, sustainability and the South Asian community. Join me, your host, Arpana Sharma, each week as I have candid conversations with thought leaders, social entrepreneurs, researchers, activists and creatives as we uncover the strategies, innovations and stories behind their efforts to reshape our society. Welcome back to season four of the rethink they see reframe series. We've had a good run so far interviewing a diverse array of individuals focusing on improving the world. This season, we're kicking it off by talking about the importance of elected representation for people of color in the United States. And this episode is airing right before the presidential primary election on March 5th, where in addition to voting for the primary presidential candidates for the November election, US citizens will also be choosing several local city and county elected representatives. So California is one of the most diverse states in the nation. But is this diversity reflected in our local political leadership? So while representation does not automatically translate into equitable policies, it does matter. Leaders who come from communities that experience discrimination and structural racism firsthand, bring that knowledge into governing and can be important advocates for policies that dismantle barriers and improve environmental conditions. So our guest today is Pavin Jindal, who was the first South Asian and person of color to secure a place on the Loma Linda City Council, as well as one of the youngest in the city's history. Bhavan is currently in the middle of running his reelection campaign. His election to city council has been exciting for me because I've known Pavin since high school. And I grew up in San Bernardino County, the county Loma Linda is situated in, ever since I immigrated to the United States when I was six years old. So I wanted to understand from him what the process of running for elected office was like, what kind of challenges he's experienced firsthand. And once getting on the council, how he has been working on implementing projects to benefit underrepresented communities as well as address climate change? And if he has any tips for those of us who might be interested in pursuing our own political careers? Welcome and thank you for joining us for this interesting conversation.
Thank you very much for having me, Arpana. It really means a lot.
Yeah, well, excited to have you and I'd love to get our listeners started by asking, can you share with our listeners a little bit about your background? And what led you to become involved in local politics?
Yeah, so I was born in India, 1994, and I came to the United States in 1997. So when I was three years old, my dad had already been here for a while. My mom and I immigrated to the country a few years after. Lived throughout California, so a lot of time in Southern California, but we've lived in Berkeley. As many immigrant families do, we moved around a lot in search for better opportunities. Most of my time though, I've lived in San Bernardino County with Loma Linda being here for the past 12 years. I was always very active in high school with not politics, but helping out in the local community. So I was president of Key Club for two years. Key Club is the high school version of Kiwanis, a volunteer organization. So I had a lot of experience already working in the community. I worked with numerous different organizations such as YMCA, NeoZone Wheels and other organizations that were involved in the community. This, getting into politics is an extension of that. My interest was actually international development, particularly in South Asia where I'm from and Southeast Asia. I saw there was a lot of opportunity in these countries, not only locally, but also internationally, how they can develop. And I figured, why not do something similar at a local level, starting from Loma Linda?
Nice. So as the first South Asian council member for Loma Linda, what really motivated you to run for office? And what kind of challenges did you face during your campaign? I can imagine that, you know, it's, it's kind of a daunting task seeing yourself, yourself as someone who could even be in an elected position when, when you are a minority. And I'd love to get your perspective on this.
Yeah, so as for what motivated me to run, I saw opportunity not only in the city, but in the region. So again, having been here, having lived throughout the state, just in the past decade or so, I've seen all of our orange fields become warehouses, more traffic. Development is good, you know, I want development, but it has to be responsible development. And I knew that that was not what was happening in the current state. So if there's one thing I would have to point to, I would say it's that just irresponsible development that a lot of environmental organizations, labor organizations and really community ground-based organizations, you know, had issues with. As for your second question of some of the challenges that I faced while running, I'm the first South Asian, at least that we know of, that has ever been elected into San Bernardino County. I'm the first non-70 Adventist in my city and I'm the youngest ever council member. With some of those comes a lot of issues of something simple, so paperwork, right? This is something that a lot of newbies, for the lack of a better term, having, have problems with. It's different types of paperwork, filling them out, deadlines. I decided to run, I would say, two weeks before, and it was really from the pushing of my friends who encouraged me to take that step. But while there is encouragement, you got to figure out a lot of these things by yourself, right? And there wasn't a lot of help the first time around. Because not a lot of people have been in this situation. So I think that was very difficult. I think the second part is that there hadn't been a new elected person for our race since 2008, when is, when is when the previous individuals were elected. So 2012 elections were canceled in the city, 2016 elections were canceled in the city. Come 2020, that's when I ran for, to replace at least one of the individuals on the city council. So there was an entrenched interest of the individuals that were already on. Some of them are trying to break records, being on the city council for 24, 28 years. So they had the opposite for me. They, they knew exactly where the city stood, had a better understanding of how to run an election, even though they didn't have to. But they've been involved not only in their election, but also other elections in neighboring cities, helping some of their allies. So it was really much like a David Goliath versus situation of, you know, figuring everything out. And the last thing I would say, it's such a short time period. So elections are in March. I started, I think, first week of December. So you really don't have much time to learn. It's more like you do it and then you learn from your mistakes.
So just to get some clarification, because you were like, oh, I signed up two weeks before it started. So you, you started two weeks before the deadline for when you could, you could kind of start campaigning to be elected?
Yeah, so there's a deadline of when you have to register to be on the ballot. If you don't register by that deadline, you can, you could do a write-in, but those aren't successful. I have a friend that's doing that now and she's having a very tough time. But you have to register by a certain date to actually qualify to be on the ballot.
And what does it look like to register? Do you have to have a certain number of signatures in your name?
Yeah, so for our city, you have to get 20 signatures. Now, the issue with that is that, you know, when you ask your neighbors, you know, if they would support you being on the city council, many of them say yes. And many of them think they are registered voters, but it turns out they aren't. So that's like, that's something I had previously mentioned, right? One of my friends and allies is doing it in another city. So she's a current councilwoman. She submitted her 20 signatures. Some of them were not registered voters and now she's not on the ballot and has to do it as a write-in. So that's something that when I was running the first time, I, I didn't know. So I submitted, luckily I did it on time and I submitted, I think, a week before. So some of the ones that were invalid signatures, we had time to go back and fix and get, get signatures from other individuals.
There's so many efforts to, to go out and actually register people to vote. And then, and it's like moments like this that you just like realize how, how little people really know about the election process or have participated in it before.
Yeah, I mean, even right now, Arpana, I'm going around knocking on doors and people say they're registered and they might be registered, but they're not registered at their current address. So they haven't gotten their mail-in ballots for a reason, because they might be registered in a different city, in a different state. And that's important. You can't vote unless you're registered at your current address.
So when you actually started campaigning and kind of going and knocking on doors, were there any kind of specific challenges that you ran into during that process?
Yeah, so one thing I learned and one thing I do not like about running is the amount of money that's needed. So even before canvassing, I didn't quite realize that there was going to be such a big expenditure. So for reference, I have a city of, at that time, it was 25,000 individuals. And my campaign actually ended up costing about 25,000 by the end of it. So that's very big for someone like me, you know, right out of college. I'd graduated two, two and a half years prior. I was not used to fundraising at all. So I had done, you know, small amounts here and there for high school, but this was a totally different ballgame. So that was one big challenge, even before the canvassing began, is we realized, you know, we needed a fundraiser, starting small and working your way in the community. While canvassing itself, so you know, once we have the literature that, that took some time, so people would actually remember your name. Some of the other challenges that we faced is, and all candidates have this, right? Some people don't even want to listen to what you have to say. They're very one-issue based, very partisan. And at a local level, it's a nonpartisan race, so party doesn't matter. And even, you know, while, when I'm on the dais, I, I work a lot with my counterparts from all different parties. But I, I think the normal resident is looking at the bigger picture, so federal government, state government. And it's hard to get your foot in the door sometimes. And then making the ask. So one thing I've honed on since my first time is, you know, my job is to explain who I am, what I do. And if I have a second individual with me, that's the person who, you know, usually makes the ask. But some of those small things that make you effective at canvassing, right? I didn't know that the first time around and it's through experience that you learn. But overall, I would say that 90% of the residents I met, you know, were really great people. We have great neighbors. They have serious concerns that they feel haven't been heard. And this was really their first opportunity, meeting someone, you know, who was willing to listen. Because unfortunately, when you don't have elections, there's not enough of an incentive for incumbents to go around and talk to their neighbors and see what the issues, how they evolve over time. So I would say it was a very fun process, daunting at first and then challenging once you actually get into it. But very eye-opening and at the end of the day, it's just great getting to know your community better.
You spent about $25,000 on your campaign. Is that, do you know if that's similar or different than what other electeds have, or your city has spent on their campaigns?
Yeah, so not for city, so Obama ran for president. And this is one thing, you know, he also had an issue with is we love serving the community. We hate fundraising to run these elections. My election was on par with bigger cities because we were at large while those cities were in districts. So a city like San Bernardino, for example, much bigger city, I think it's eight times the size, seven, eight times the size. But because they're in district, their elections cost the same. There are some wards which are, you know, much more. The sky's the limit, right? Like how do you, how do you gauge when you have spent enough, when you've made enough of an impact? Skipping forward a little bit, I only won by 21 votes. And that was a very close margin. The question becomes, you know, if I sent out one less mailer, which was around $2,000 apiece, would I have even won my election? So when I say is the sky the limit, right, or where in the sky is the limit? It's because you never know how you're doing until it's actually over. And you don't want to look back and say, oh, if I had only fundraised this amount, or if I had done X, Y, Z, I could have actually won. Because that obviously happened with my opponent, who lost by 21 votes. Maybe if they had fundraised a little more, maybe if they had canvassed a few more houses, they could have gotten in.
Now that you're running the second time, is there, is there a different set of challenges that you're facing? Or are they similar to what you had last time?
Yeah, so I'm facing the same opponent as I had last time. And the opponent is much better prepared. I think last time they tried, but not nearly as hard. So I would say that's a new challenge. It's a different beast altogether. And one other portion that makes it a different beast is we're in districts for the first time. Whereas in the past, we were at large. So running in the district, which, you know, closer to home, it's different because it's much smaller, right? And the margin of error that you have is much smaller. To put that in context, if I won by 20 vote, 21 votes last time, the ratio of that would equal five votes this time around. So I was nervous the first time. I'm nervous the second time around too.
Yeah, that sounds pretty terrifying. Your hands is in the vote and, but it also speaks to the electoral process as well. And that everyone who can vote should vote because their voice really matters in this type of election.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I, I, I think my district has around a 35% voting rate among registered voters. I don't even know how many people are eligible to be registered and haven't registered. So it can be, again, it could be nerve-wracking. I have another friend, last year, she lost by one vote for a school board race. And her district was bigger than mine, so it really becomes, you know, just, when you're running smaller races, it's much different from running larger county-wide statewide races.
Yeah, that makes sense, but it can significantly alter the representation for things that most people really care about as well. So it's very powerful. Since you've kind of entered city council, what unique perspective or experiences do you feel like you bring to the city council as a South Asian? And the, probably one of the first people of color individuals on the council?
Yeah, so not only is a South Asian, but having some of the experiences I've had is a unique perspective. So I grew up in a very low-income area. That wasn't exactly safe. That's not something that a lot of my peers have had to go through. They haven't been unhoused. They haven't lived in the areas I have. They haven't been intimate with that, with that type of atmosphere. So I think that's what I bring to the table, is a better understanding of not only one part of the city, but like, how does the other part of the city, what different resources do they need to be successful? Because I was lacking those resources growing up. And kind of the pitfall, so you know, one thing we look at a lot in SBCTA is transportation. Public transportation, who is a bigger user of public transportation? It's lower income areas, right? But those areas aren't always the areas being served by public transportation. And I see that in my city. There should be much more public transportation in my district than there currently is. Back to your question about specifically, you know, South Asian, I think, two things. So first of all, the way our parents raised us is, you know, you're working hard. You look at the videos of my city council or even on some of the committees I'm in, we don't have active participation from all the elected officials. There's only a handful that are asking questions and even fewer that have done the homework. So I think that's something my parents instilled in me is like, when you're, you know, doing something, do it right. So I try to be the active one, asking questions, reading up on the material beforehand. So that's one piece. Second piece, obviously, is being a minority, not just in the city, but in the country overall. You can see the dichotomy in the way resources are allocated. And I don't think it's purposeful. It's just, sometimes when you're looking at the data, it shows you half of the story and that's the easiest way to make a decision. But again, having had some of the experiences I've had, I like to think that I can see a bigger picture and make decisions based off of that. So not only on the data, but also some of the intricacies of implementing policies, whether that's at a city level or county or state.
Yeah, that makes sense and it's great to see how your lived experience is influencing your perspective. So throughout his tenure, Bhavan spearheaded numerous environmental initiatives, such as establishing the city's inaugural community garden in District One and implementing widespread tree planting efforts, earning Loma Linda's prestigious designation of Tree City USA. He is a champion for affordable housing initiatives to combat homelessness. And he's worked to lower barriers for small businesses and harnessing technology to enhance public safety. And his impact has extended beyond Loma Linda to where now he serves on the Board of Directors for the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority, influencing a $1.2 billion annual budget. In 2023, has joined the League of California Cities Committee for Governance, Transparency and Labor Relations, representing Loma Linda's interests on the county and statewide platforms. In what ways do you hope to promote social impact and community development during your tenure on city council if you, if you get reelected again?
Yeah, so social impact. One of the things you had mentioned and I'm really proud of is the community garden that we have. This used to be a concrete lot and now it serves a few key purposes in, within our community. So first, it's bringing people together. I mentioned the apathy in voting and part of it is, you know, the community isn't organized. Small initiatives like that bring the community together. People get talking and they're able to make a bigger change. It's a domino effect. So I want to continue doing projects like that, not just in my district, but the city overall. I think we have a lot of opportunity in having stuff that brings people together, that makes, makes the area a better area to be in. Second is funding. So this is something I'm actually trying to do with some of the committees I'm on. One example I'll give is SBCTA. So SBCTA is applying for a multi-billion dollar funding request from the federal government. When we talk about social impact and community development, funding's always important. Now, a lot of that funding is going to go towards big cities. And another big part is going to go to cities that actually ask for the money. So what I had mentioned, you know, during a lot of these committee meetings, people aren't reading up. It actually benefits my community because I'm looking at what the process is and what kind of funding we're getting. And I'm already starting to make those requests, even though the funding hasn't been secured. But I'm pretty sure it will be. And if I can identify some of the areas and provide specific proposals within my community that could benefit, I have my foot in the door early and the, the community and the city overall benefits from that. So we're able to get some more resources to help develop our area. And over the next four years, there's going to be a lot of that. And I'm hoping to get a first mover advantage to get some of that within my city and within my area.
That's really great and it's, it's valuable to know how important it is to, to be able to do your homework and like really read the materials and be proactive when you're on city council. And there's a lot of advantages to it. So thank you for sharing that. I, I would love to know, you kind of shared a little bit about kind of the transportation work that you're doing. I'd love to know, how do you plan on addressing kind of some of the issues around affordable housing in Loma Linda? And particularly considering the diverse demographics of the city?
Yeah, so this is probably one of the most important topics for me. Few reasons for that. I had mentioned that, you know, when I, in my youth, we went through a rough period. So that shaped some of the policy decisions I made. And second, just overall, being a millennial, right? Housing is becoming very unaffordable for people my age. Some of the houses that, you know, were selling for, let's say, 200,000 before COVID, are selling for 400,000 plus now and wages haven't risen with that. So in my perspective, affordable housing is necessary. Some of the arguments are, you know, we're a big city, we can't support affordable housing. I disagree with that. We might not be able to, you know, cover the needs of the county because we're a very small part, but we're a significant part. And we can definitely make an outsized impact of what we are able to contribute. So I pushed for some affordable housing that we have being developed now. We're going to have around 240 units developed within the city. That's going to be senior housing. And one of the views I've taken is how do we address the impact for at-risk populations? So that includes veterans, that includes seniors, it includes youth. So I'm trying to target each one separately because there is a separate process and separate funding that these individuals get. So we have veterans housing already, that was before I came. We just got some senior housing approved. And then I'm pushing for some more low-income housing within my area. There is some available land that we have from the redevelopment agency days and the city's looking to develop something on it. And I think we can develop another couple hundred units for affordable housing. We haven't decided exactly what or who would benefit from that. So those discussions are still to be had, but I, that's one of my main motives for the next four years is to make sure that whichever population we decide to go with, we're actually able to get that approved and get something built before the end of my, if I get reelected before 2028.
Yeah, I mean, with my urban planning background, I know like buildings like this take forever to build and get permanent. So I wish you luck with this.
Yeah, and it's built right. So again, the veteran village that we have was built before my time. But one of the concerns that they have is that there's no elevator. It's three stories and the law is if you have four stories, you need elevators. Many of these veterans are wounded. They, you can imagine, right, veterans, wounded veterans. I'm not sure why we approved something like that. Yes, we addressed a need, but we didn't go all the way. And now a significant amount of the population we were trying to help out is, you know, not getting the exact help they need. So even though it might take time, I want to make sure whatever we do first, like let's do something. And second, let's do it right.
Yeah, I think that's really valuable to know just how much influence city council can have on that process. And especially in thinking about and reviewing the proposals that come up and really making sure that the, the work is being done right for those individuals that really need it. So kind of continuing off of that, are there any specific initiatives or projects that you are currently working on or hoping to implement to benefit the South Asian community? Or the, like, you know, just the larger community of folks who are low-income in Loma Linda?
Yeah, so we want to make sure we're voting a community for all, right? Regardless of race, age, income status. For South Asians in particular, one of the biggest concerns is, so let me rewind a little bit. We have two types. So we have a major hospital and university system, the Loma Linda University. We have a lot of doctors and then those doctors have young families and they have their elderly parents. So we're really trying to target a wide spectrum of the South Asian community. Some of their, the two biggest concerns I've heard from them is related to businesses is public safety. Is that they want more public safety. They feel that while some of their neighborhoods might be secure, the other parts of the city that are more public the other parts of the city that are more public-facing, so our main streets, um, could use some help. So that's one area that I'm working with our sheriff's department of tackling, is how can we use technology? Because you can't just keep adding personnel. Is how do we use technology to better, to provide a better service and help our community out? Second, it's a variety of activities to do. Again, a lot of these families have, um, are living with grandparents. And they have a different need than do someone, you know, school-aged. If you're a student, you're going to school, you know, you have a playground there. We don't have enough activities for seniors. So one small initiative I'd like to take, uh, just like we did with the community garden, is get more resources put into our senior center. Loma Linda is a blue zone where people have longevity. Um, they live to be long. Um, but we don't really have many activities for seniors. We don't have anything that promotes that blue zone. So over the next four years, I want to incorporate some of the things I've already been doing with that segment of the population and, you know, actually have Loma Linda stand up to its name of being a blue zone. Overall, so specific initiatives, I kind of mentioned with SBCTA, there, there's a lot of funding coming through. Um, I would like to do some electrification projects within the city. We need to, as a collective, we need to decrease our use of fossil fuels, uh, which is what, you know, different segments of the government are trying to assist municipalities like ourselves to do. I think you can't have that if it's only a top-down approach, uh, from an income perspective. So while we have some things planned for higher-income areas, which makes sense, we also need to get ahead of the curve and start doing that in some of the lower-income areas that we have, to make sure we're ready for the next twenty years down the road and have that infrastructure in place, which would be cheaper to build now than if we try to do it twenty years later.
That's helpful to understand. And also, like, just the diversity in different populations that you're trying to serve. Uh, very valuable information. So, um, what kind of challenges do you face when you are bringing up ideas or pushing for changes on the council? Um, and are there any kind of issues that you found it easy to address versus harder to address?
Yeah, so when I first got on, it was much more difficult. Um, part of that is you're earning everyone's trust. Um, I was an outsider, as I mentioned. The last election was two thousand and eight, when these individuals had gotten in. I didn't get on many of the committees I wanted to, so I have a lot of passion for infrastructure, um, and transportation. So how to build that trust up over time, uh, I mentioned electrification. I had proposed some measures that would increase electrification for new buildings. I didn't get that through. So you could see the evolution. In the beginning, a lot of things I was proposing didn't get through. Over time, I proved myself, again, just by doing homework, that, you know, I knew what I was talking about. And then you could see over time, some of the things that I was pushing for started, um, getting more support. So one example I'll give is about a year ago, maybe a little year and a half. We had a proposal for, uh, development in our hills. If it was a previous city council, it would have, you know, that development would have been approved. But again, doing some of the homework, organizing some of the community to come out and, you know, make sure that there's widespread support from the community itself. We were able to get that blocked, not because we don't want development, but because, again, it has to be responsible. So that was a three-two vote. And, you know, there's many more instances of that where I slowly, over time, have been, um, able to get more of my agenda, in a way, um, get passed and, you know, make the city cleaner, which is my ultimate goal. Cleaner, cleaner, safer, and just a better place to live overall.
Yeah, um, and are there, that's valuable to know, kind of how relationship building has really allowed you to um, kind of be more effective once you've, you've gotten onto city council. Um, and, and just like the amount of, um, time that trust building really takes. So my final question for you to end this session is, as a role model for, you know, other South Asians and other people of color in general, or really anyone who's interested in running, uh, for elected office, but has never, um, never seen themselves, um, kind of be in that position, what advice would you offer to those, um, who aspire to be on a similar path in politics and in community leadership to yours?
Yeah, so this isn't a traditional path, right? When I was growing up, what you hear a lot in the South Asian community is you become a doctor, a lawyer, or an engineer. This isn't any of those. I, I think one piece of advice I would give anyone considering it is just do it and do it when you're sixty percent ready. You're never going to be ready all the way. I mentioned some of the challenges I had, some of the issues I had to learn about, the fundraising I had to do. But I wasn't a, you know, I wasn't a total beginner. I had some of the knowledge. I had seen some campaigns before. And I felt I was at that sixty percent, sixty, seventy percent threshold. Um, and when you're at that, you just go for it. A lot of things, a lot of items, you will learn, um, while you're at the job. And that's not just coming from me. I've seen a lot of people in the same group, right? A lot of peers I work with. There's two types. Either they don't know what they're talking about, and they'll never know what they're talking about. Or they won't know what they're talking about at the moment, but they will do the research and learn. So if you're willing to be in that second group of individuals, you'll do well.
Thanks for joining us and, uh, really, really great conversation. I hope you all take, uh, good notes from this and maybe we'll see you all in the next set of elections. Uh, thank you so much for joining us, Pavan.
Yeah, thank you very much, Pavan. And, um, I really appreciate you having me on this podcast.
Yeah, definitely. And, uh, for folks who are interested in Pavan's election campaign, you can check out his website and the show notes.